All right. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's special city council meeting. My name's Craig Maladra. I'm an alderman from the 5th Ward. I serve along with Alderman Swanson. Mayor Burns is way on business tonight. However, he is attending the meeting virtually, I believe.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
He was attending the meeting virtually. All right, let's get started. Roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Ruby, here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
And then Mayor Burns, if you can identify yourself, please.
Present.
With your name, so that we know who you are.
Mayor Kevin Burns is present.
Thank you.
All right, very good. As always, we begin city council meetings with a pledge of allegiance. So tonight, I think I'd like to ask the other mayor to lead us in the process.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Items of business. We have one item tonight, folks. Item 3A is to consider a revised draft letter to state-elected officials regarding City of Geneva electric operation and potential impacts of proposed legislation. Do I have a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
And Alderman Swanson. Roll call, you. So it's good? All in favor?
No.
No, no.
It's just for discussion now.
Oh, it's just for discussion. Sorry.
It's okay.
Jumping ahead. Okay, so I will turn it over to the council. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm glad we're finally here tonight. I don't think this letter says anything that we all haven't already iterated on this dais in terms of our wish to move to a sustainable energy grid. We've done, I think we've done a good job ourselves on decarbonizing the city. And the letter does point out that we have our own potential vulnerabilities for our ratepayers if embedded in the legislation that's percolating through Springfield. I don't know the status of that legislation now, but we certainly have some things that should be addressed. In this, in the letter here, it's never intimated that we will not honor our obligations. I think all we're asking here is that if legislation goes through, that we're on a level playing field with other communities. It should be noted that Batavia passed their letter, the similar intent, much more hyper-specific, by a vote of 13 to 1, with a 1 nay vote, because it was a qualified letter, not an unqualified letter. We are presenting here a qualified letter. There are a lot of unknowns with such massive legislation, but so long as we're on the same playing field as other Illinois communities, in my opinion, it's our ethical obligation to look to the future generations of Genevaans for their environment and health. So I'm happy to sign on to this letter. Thanks.
Anybody else from the dais? Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I agree with what Alderman Bruno said about I'm prepared to sign on to this letter as well. I did want to ask the drafter of the letter if we should include any mention of the methane recapture, because I believe we discussed that as a potential problem area for our energy portfolio, and it's not mentioned in this letter at all. So I thought the three pieces that impacted us were Prairie State, the generation facility, as well as the methane recapture. And given that the methane recapture is the greenest way of handling the methane gas, should we not mention that? So I'd like to ask if we, if anyone would agree to add that to this memo, or if we should.
Okay, thank you. Is it still your floor?
I'm just throwing that out there for discussion. I would prefer, since it impacts us and could be detrimental to us, should we mention that we feel that it's, we're doing the best we can with the methane gas in the greenest way, and we would prefer that it not be disallowed.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the dais? Before I recognize Alderman Bruno again, for the aldermen attending virtually, is there anything you'd like to add, or? Mayor Burns?
This is Mayor Burns. No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As the, I guess the initial drafter of this letter, I didn't, I specifically didn't mention it, because my understanding was the legislation carved out methane recapture is acceptable. I could be wrong on that, so I'd have no problem inserting a comma in our methane recapture, but...
It was my understanding that it was going to, it potentially could be disallowed, so we, I think we should mention that we would like it to be continued.
If you want to make a motion with...
It's your floor.
Oh, yeah. Let's see. Well, let me come back with language.
Okay.
Unless the honorable alderman wants to...
While somebody is working on language for an amendment, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Alderman Casarog?
So, I was just wondering about the paragraph that we inserted here, where the genesis of that was, and who made the recommendation to include that, referring to the last paragraph about honoring our obligations with NIPA and SEJA. I'm sorry, NIPA and Prairie State.
I think I would turn to the city attorney for that one.
If you read the memo, if you received the memo I had, that language is in the memo itself. So, exactly, so genesis of that language is also identified.
I guess I was confused that that was advised by legal counsel, correct?
It was.
Our legal counsel, or somebody else's legal counsel?
Yes. So it's part of NIPA's legal counsel, and it represents the city with respect to power contracts and the resulting bonds that support the initiatives that the city has already undertaken.
So our legal counsel also recommends this, is what I'm trying to get to. Not just somebody else's legal counsel, but our specifically.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Marx?
On that paragraph, is there a reason why we mention one bill in here? Can we take that SEJA out and just say, in the event a clean energy bill is passed? Is there a reason that you wanted SEJA?
I think it specifically says, in the event SEJA or another clean energy.
I don't know why we're mentioning SEJA in here. It's one of the bills, not the only bill out there.
Okay, I, that's...
Yeah, I think it was SEJA, because that originally, I think, was what the focus was. But I think certainly, that's, if the council's amenable to that, I think that's a reasonable modification.
I'll make a motion, then, to take out SEJA and just say, in the event a clean energy bill passes, is passed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alderman Casarog? Okay, comments or questions on the motion?
Amendment.
On the amendment?
I'll just say, I thought that stuck out for me, too, and I would agree with Alderman Marx that there's no point in mentioning any specific bill in here, from my point of view. Unless the legal opinion is such that it needs to be mentioned.
Any other comments or questions, those attending virtually? All right.
No comments or questions, thank you.
You can do a roll call on the amendment.
Roll call. Okay, Bruno? This is on the amendment. Burkhardt? Aye. Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
So now the amendment carried, so it's the motion as amended.
Back to the motion as amended. Alderman Kilburg?
I would offer the following addition to end of the third paragraph as related to methane recapture. Senator Ruby, we also ask for this...
Thank you. We also ask for the continuation of our working relationship with Kane County on the utilization of methane gas emitted from the retired Kane County landfill.
What's with waste management?
With, oh, excuse me, waste management. I'll read that again. We also ask for the continuation of our working relationship with waste management on the utilization of methane gas emitted from the retired Kane County landfill.
All right, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Alderman Marx? Okay, comments or questions on?
Amendment.
On the amendment? Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor Maladra. I would add to that statement that we feel that the methane recapture facility handles this naturally occurring gas in the most sustainable fashion or manner. Would that be acceptable?
I'm fine with it, as far as an addition or a compliment to my amendment.
So it's a friendly amendment to the amendment proposed?
Correct.
You have to vote up. First, it needs a second.
I'll second it.
So now we have an amended amendment. Does anybody need that amended amendment restated?
I do.
You have my sentence.
I have yours. And I have the recording.
The Alderman Kilburg's and the recording, but I would, if you could just restate it, so I have it in my notes as well.
We feel that this facility, or the methane recapture facility, handles this naturally occurring gas in the most sustainable manner.
Any questions?
And that is, that is inserted precisely where in the...
At the end of the third paragraph. Both sentences.
At the end of the third paragraph. Okay.
Can we read that? Full sentence?
So, "We also ask for the continuation of our working arrangement with waste management on utilizing the methane gas at the Kane County landfill, as we feel this use of this," and I'll play it back for sure, "but handles this methane in the most sustainable manner." Or is it close?
There were a couple words missing, but yeah, that's fine. Perfect.
That help?
Yeah, I'm not sure handles is the right word, but...
Well, and I guess I would ask, tell me if this is appropriate, that we understand the intent of what you're saying, and when we draft the final letter, we would make sure that that intent is there, but it might be wordsmith ever so slightly, to ensure that it's conveying what you are trying to say.
That's acceptable.
But I don't know, there's not really a motion, that's just an agreement.
Okay, all right. Again.
With these changes that we're voting on, are we going to be able to send the letter off, or do we have to meet again and vote on the letter?
As long as you direct me to, when the letter is passed, that you understand and agree that I can make editorial changes that don't change the substance of the letter, it will go in the mail tomorrow.
Any other questions? Okay. On the amended amendment, roll call.
You can do one vote on the amendment.
As amended.
Correct.
Friendly amendment.
Correct, because it's a friendly, exactly.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
A friendly aye.
All right. Back to the motion as amended. Alderman Burkhardt?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm glad it's up to you, you up there, not me, tonight. We'd all be rusty, so. I'd like to make a motion to delete the final paragraph that starts, "In the event a clean energy bill is passed closing facilities and/or impacting the city's operations prior to the termination of the city's contractual obligations, the city reiterates its intent to honor all of its contractual power contracts and the underlying bond issues issued in support thereof." It's my motion, and I'll explain why if I get a second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alderman Swanson, seconds.
Very good, thank you, thank you. The legal opinion, and I appreciate all of us being here tonight, this is hard, this is complex, this is tough, and this is the third Monday we've talked about it, so thank you, everyone. And I appreciate our, the hard work by everyone up there on this issue. This legal opinion, though, that we receive states that a letter of support for clean energy was not inappropriate as long as it did not derogate any bond or contractual obligations of the city. The original text of the letter, in my opinion, in no way derogates any obligation on the part of the City of Geneva. The idea that the letter of support for clean energy before us must reaffirm in writing every obligation defies logic. This letter was not intended to revisit or reaffirm all the terms of the ill-fated contract with Prairie State. I understand why Mr. Heineman, who is the legal counsel for NIPA, feels more comfortable with the proposed language included. I don't understand why we, as a city council representing the city's interest and advocating our desire for a cleaner environment, would choose to do so. We put this, at least the original three, put this letter together to advocate for a letter to show support for efforts to change the trajectory of climate change and reduce our reliance on fossil fuel. Without knowing what the final bill in Springfield will provide in terms of relief for reliant municipalities, it doesn't seem prudent to put our head on the proverbial chopping block without knowing exactly what the future might look like. I worry that there will be federal lawsuits if Prairie State closes before its time involving the other communities that are tied to Prairie State. And I worry a letter like this with us, again, kind of bending over backwards to reiterate our intent to honor all of its contractual power contracts and the underlying bonds issued in support thereof, would put us in a place I don't know that we'd want to be. I guess I'll ask our city attorney, would this letter be able to be, this letter would be able to be evidence in any kind of future litigation? No matter what it says, it could be.
Both ways.
Gotcha, okay. So I wholeheartedly support the move to green renewable energy and wish to convey that to our state representatives. We've made many mistakes when it comes to Prairie State, let's not make another tonight by going above and beyond our stated intention to satisfy anyone's wish to reinforce the city's contractual obligations. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the dais? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Alderman Burkhardt. I, too, agree that it seems to dilute the intent. I don't, as was said, it doesn't derogate our responsibilities up to that point. What I don't know is if this somehow would carry some weight with state legislators as to whether that would help them move forward on such legislation. Quite honestly, I don't like the last paragraph in there, but I honestly, I couldn't tell you whether it's good or bad to take it out. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Cavan?
Thank you. I guess for me, I mean, I understand what, you know, you're saying, Alderman Burkhardt, but this is just a letter that we're sending off. Whatever legalese is in all the different contracts that we, as the city, signed away on 20 years ago, that stuff's all already in there. So to me, having something like this that's in a letter doesn't really make any difference, because this doesn't change what we've already signed off on in those contracts, which specifically states that we're on the hook for, we already know the dollar value for what we would wind up having to pay for those years between 2030 and 2042. So from that standpoint, I don't, I don't think that it really, I don't think that really matters. But at the same time, if our legal representation believes that that should still be in there as well, I would probably tend to lean to leaving it in there, even though whether this paragraph is in there or not, at the end of the day, I don't really think winds up making a big difference. But those are, those are my thoughts for right now. Thank you.
Anybody else to the amendment? Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. I just wanted to share a revision, just for, food for thought here, to replace that last paragraph with this. "In the event SEJA or another clean energy bill is passed closing facilities and/or impacting the city's operations prior to the termination of the city's contractual obligations, the city respectfully requests government assistance to aid our fulfillment of contractual power contracts and the underlying bonds without financially devastating our community."
So you offer that wording just for...
Just, can we, can we just discuss if anyone else liked that without making an amendment? Can we, can we talk about that?
Alderman Burkhardt?
I'm going to reject that friendly amendment, as unfriendly as that sounds, and would prefer a vote on what my motion was.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Alderman Ruby?
No, that's fine. And I support Tara's amendment. I wasn't trying to interfere with that, I was just offering another, an alternative, that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else remotely? Mayor Burns?
No comments, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Okay. Am I allowed to? Absolutely. We still have a vote. So my position on the amendment falls to what I think Alderman Casarog was getting at earlier today. It is the legal opinion of our bond council, and it's in the letter. "Failing to acknowledge obligations could be interpreted as a material adverse condition or circumstance that triggers a default." I think we're playing with big numbers here, and I think that those who have an interest in those big numbers are watching what we say and what we do as carefully as those who have an interest in us continuing to embrace and move towards clean energy. As I said last week, our embrace of a transition to clean energy has to be just that, it has to be a reasonable transition. Adding this language at the end, which is language specifically requested by bond council, does nothing to, nothing to say that we are turning our backs on 20 years' worth of effort to increase our use of clean energy. It does nothing to say that the city embraces a move towards carbon neutral or carbon free, but what it does say is that we intend to do that responsibly. So my personal take would be I will vote against the motion. Alderman Swanson?
Thank you. I have a proposed change. If we were to remove this paragraph, would it satisfy legal counsel if we added to paragraph two? Because in paragraph two, we talk about the city being forced to simultaneously pay for a shuttered Prairie State. Could we add, while honoring our contractual power obligations and debt obligations, and put it in that paragraph and not add the second qualifying paragraph? Would that satisfy the objectives from legal?
I don't know the answer to that specific question, because it wasn't posed in that fashion. What Mr. Heineman made clear to city administrator Dawkins and Mr. Radovich and myself was, there should be no indication by the city council that it doesn't intend to honor its obligations. And to not have this language could easily be construed as an intent to not do so and/or, as I wrote down, a failure to acknowledge obligations that extend beyond the legislation's 2030 period. So moving it up, I don't think would violate it, but I don't know that that has the same meaning. I haven't thought about it, Alderman, so I need to kind of think through, is it exactly the same message? If it is, I don't think he'd be objecting. But he saw the language that is now proposed and said that was satisfactory. That's only, that's the only thing he's seen, as is.
Okay, I understand that. I guess I look at paragraph two and think in no way are we saying we're not going to honor our contractual obligations. So I think by adding the second paragraph, we're stating something that is supporting nothing that we said. So unless we said something to the contrary...
The second paragraph discusses where the city is presently. It doesn't discuss when legislation is passed. That's the difference. If legislation is passed, again, we don't even know what the legislation says. I mean, that's, so we're told the legislation says that all coal-generated facilities would have to close by 2030. So that's why it's after that component. So the city's reiterating its intention to, it's before the act, is all I'm saying.
Okay. And I'm guessing, I'm saying I don't think we're showing any intention to not fulfill our obligations, so I still would propose running it by legal to see if we could add that in the second paragraph and eliminate the final paragraph. So that would be my...
Just to clarify, you mean the third paragraph?
No, I'm talking about the second paragraph.
The one starting at the low level?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the third paragraph. Yep. There's too many, too many names in it.
For the record, I was not sure.
Thank you. The one that begins as you may be aware. Thank you. Nonetheless, I would support Alderwoman Burkhardt's amendment to eliminate this final paragraph, and if we could strengthen the third paragraph, I would do so. Thank you.
That's not a motion to amend, and you would reject it because you want to vote on your motion?
I take it in the spirit, it's offered in that if one thing happens, Alderman Swanson might propose a second thing, but right now on the floor is whether to delete the final paragraph.
Okay. We can do a roll call.
So this is on the amendment to eliminate the final paragraph. Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Okay, so an aye is to strike the...
An aye would be to strike the last paragraph. Okay, Ruby, sorry.
That's good, that's okay. Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Casarog?
Nay.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marx?
Nay.
Mayor?
Mayor, sorry. Nay. I'm sorry, what?
Nay.
Okay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Nay.
And Burkhardt?
Aye.
So that's three to seven.
Motion fails. Amendment fails.
Amendment fails. All right. Back to the overall motion as amended.
Twice.
Twice. Any further questions or comments? Sir, those attending virtually, Alderman Ruby? Nope. Mayor Burns?
Mr. Mayor Protem, just one clarifying statement. It was referenced earlier that this letter with...
It was referenced earlier that this letter with perhaps simple modification would be, quote, "mail tomorrow." It'll be mailed and emailed tomorrow, just for clarification.
Noted, thank you. All right. To the motion as amended twice then, roll call.
Okay, so this is the original amendment as amended twice.
The original motion as amended twice.
The original motion as amended twice. So we're voting on the letter as amended twice, which is the last paragraph changing SEJA or another to a clean energy bill, and then all the language regarding the methane gas.
Can I ask a question before we go to that? I'm sorry.
I got two, yes, you're up.
I wasn't sure, it's not really important maybe, but the brackets and other similarly impacted communities, was that? I just wasn't sure if that bracket was a kind of a question. Should we include that? Or was it meant to be a parentheses? Or maybe I'm just not understanding what brackets are? And I guess I would say, this is about us. We're not writing a letter on behalf of other communities. This is Geneva. This describes our situation and the relief that we're seeking. So I'm just not sure if that was meant for discussion or not, but I guess I would, if it's not too late, like to make a motion to take out and other similarly impacted communities and just stick with specific concerns posed by such legislation to the city of Geneva.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Burkhardt seconds it, okay. Comments to that motion, Alderman Swanson?
I agree with removing the brackets. However, I think by adding "and other similarly impacted communities" points out to the legislators that it's not just Geneva, and that perhaps they should be looking that this is bigger, and it impacts a lot of communities, and perhaps they'll take a longer look at it. So I think having that in there is appropriate and strengthens our case as opposed to making it just about us. So I would propose leaving it as is.
Okay, Alderman Bruno? Alderman Kilburg?
As the originator of those brackets, I would accept that, and the point that Alderman Swanson made, I think, I can tell you the intent was to say, consider Geneva, but don't think it's just Geneva. Make sure you consider all the communities. We're not just asking for a special favor for this zip code. So I'd ask that we leave it in. But we can change the brackets, I'm fine with that. But if you want ellipses, I'm the king of ellipses.
Alderman Kilburg?
We are a part of NIPA, and we've got Batavia and Rochelle that are our partners in NIPA with us. I take it as similarly impacted communities, and if you want to further clarify it within NIPA, yes, but, you know, I think it goes beyond just Geneva in that, especially as it relates to Batavia and Rochelle, I mean, they're intimately involved with this, and what we decide has a huge impact on NIPA. And anything that might come to pass, I think we're all equally going to be affected to some degree. So I think it does make sense to keep it in.
Before I reckon, as Alderman Bruno, a second time, any? Okay, Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Alderman. The, I think it goes well beyond NIPA. There's many, many, I believe someone, I don't know where I got the number, but I understand that there's 41 communities in the state that are somehow tied to Prairie State, so this is broader than just NIPA. Thanks.
Questions? Okay, on the amendment?
I'm going to withdraw my amendment, but change it to just removing the brackets.
Second or?
Oh, sure.
So do we want to have an amendment to remove the brackets, or do we want to consider that an editorial change that's in the bounds of?
Editorial's fine. Motion withdrawn.
All right, good. Alderman Ruby, you had something you were going to add.
Thank you, just a quick question. Assuming this passes tonight, but not everybody approves it, do all of our names still go on the letter? How does that work?
You act as a body, so whatever the final decision this evening is, if it's in favor to send the letter regardless of the vote, if a majority vote for it, it goes out under the council as a body.
Okay.
Not as individuals.
Yeah, just curious, thank you.
Alderman Burkhardt?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I find myself in the odd position of voting against a letter tonight that I helped draft. You know, for those who say, I don't know that that last paragraph matters, what is it, you know, it can go either way, and I wasn't on the council that approved the Prairie State Energy Campus. I am not cocky enough to think I would have made a different decision than the council did then. I might have very well voted for that contract. I think after you sit up here, you realize that you make the best decision based on the information in front of you, with the conditions that you're surrounded by, with the advice you receive, with the due diligence you do, and so I am not casting aspersions on anyone who was involved in that decision. Obviously, hundreds of communities across the Midwest made the exact same mistake. But I am on the council now, and I get to decide if I'm going to put, well, I guess my name's going to be on it anyway, but I get to decide if I vote in favor of this letter. And I just don't see anything in the previous one, two, three, four, five paragraphs that derogates our honoring our bonds and contractual obligations to Prairie State. But I don't see a reason that we have to put it at the end as if it's the Randy Travis song, "Forever and ever, amen, I will be true to Prairie State." And I imagine that in the future, there will be some kind of court action where a lawyer will say, "As recently as May 2021, the Geneva City Council reiterated its intent to honor all of its contractual power contracts and the underlying bonds issued and support thereof." So I will be voting no on this letter tonight. Thank you.
All right. To the motion as amended twice. Roll call.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kosrog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Nay.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the motion passes.
To one.
The letter will go out via mail and email tomorrow.
Yes, and I will, once we have the final, I will make sure you all have a copy as well.
All right. That concludes item 3A. Moving on to item four, any public comment or new business? Do we have a member of the audience? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Davin Wickstrom. I'm the husband of Amy Mayer, and today is their birthday, so just wanted to wish her a happy birthday in front of the city council.
Thank you. Happy birthday. Do we have public comment from anybody? Not in the chamber.
So via email, we did receive one public comment this evening from William Keel, and so that email will go into the minutes, and it's, "Are the bonds an impediment to closing Prairie State?" And then also, if anybody who is online would like to provide public comment, you need to raise your hand, and then you'll be recognized. Okay, no hands are raised, so.
All right. Any? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. I think you've all received an email indicating that Senator DeWitt is hosting some Zoom event to talk about energy legislation tomorrow. I just wanted to point out, it is featuring, I believe the primary presenter is the Illinois Energy Association that represents some communities and some what look to be primarily fossil fuel interests. So if you are attending, you might keep that context in the back of your head. Thanks.
Okay, any other new business? Nope. Anybody attending virtually?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Item five, folks, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Alderman Bruno, move to adjourn. Roll call.
Kosrog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Now, I was having a good time. Can I vote nay? Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
All right, that's it, folks. Thank you very much.